Be only seventeen percent of the fiscal year. So on the revenue side, we're at ten percent, a little short, but it's very early, not concerning. And on the expense side, we are spot on at seventeen percent.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
So moved, Ewing.
Thank you.
So just a question, I missed the number that you announced.
Seventeen percent.
For the revenue.
Oh, the revenue was ten percent.
Okay. Thank you.
In a second. Second, sure. All those in favor say aye.
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 Next on the agenda is oral presentations, and we have a presentation tonight from the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust about their Circle Our Cities campaign.
Hello.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Lori Scoville. I'm the regional coordinator for the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, and I live in Manchester, Iowa. I have some handouts for you before I start with my presentation. I have a few slides to share. But you can pass those. Thank you. With me today is our board president, Les Beck.
Good afternoon.
And sir, are you ready to start? Okay. So like I said, I'm Lori with the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust. Go ahead. So who are we? The Sustainable Iowa Land Trust is a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) nonprofit that secures, preserves, and stewards farmland in order to ensure that future generations of farmers have access to Iowa land to produce local healthy food and to do it in the most sustainable of possible ways. We have staff that work throughout the state. Silt protects land permanently for food farming and conservation, and we do this three ways. We do it through conservation easements, reserve life estates, and through donations of farms. Okay? Why? Well, our Iowa food is in danger. Two hundred and seventy-five acres of farmland are lost per day to development. Annually, we lose about five tons of topsoil per acre due to wind and water erosion. We have a group of aging landowners and really no plan in place to provide local food sources for our growing communities. And despite being more than eighty-five percent farmland in Iowa, we import ninety percent of our consumable food, which I think is just a crazy statistic because we have the best soils in the nation, really. As a region, the Midwest as a whole contributes only six percent to the national table food sales. It's a stark reminder of our missed opportunities within our state to support local farmers and to boost our local food economy. You know, closing this gap is essential for building a more resilient and sustainable food system in Iowa. Our future is in our hands. So what is a land trust? A land trust is the only kind of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that can make a forever promise on land that it doesn't own. This promise is called an easement. Next slide. An easement, in our case, a conservation easement, it's language attached to the deed that spells out the required and prohibited uses of the land in perpetuity. In the case of an agricultural conservation easement, we work to limit the use to agriculture. And silt, we take it one step further, and we require it be used for sustainable production of local food crops. Next slide. So obviously, there must be some benefit to landowners. So financially, landowners can choose to donate their property directly to silt. We can include it in a reserve life estate, retaining its full use during their lives, or we can place a conservation easement on it. They retain the ownership of that. Options come with significant tax incentives, and as each situation is so very unique, landowners are encouraged to work with their attorneys and tax preparers and financial advisors. Other benefits include conservation easements offer protection for landowners from zoning changes and unwanted residential or industrial development. And easements can provide peace of mind by helping maintain the legacy of a family's farm and ensuring good stewardship of the land for the future. We don't necessarily just work with individual landowners either. Silt has worked with communities too, like the city of Des Moines, and we'd be able to work with Waterloo as well. Next slide. What do we mean by sustainable agriculture? Well, generally, the guidelines for sustainable farming center around the practices that work in harmony with the land rather than depleting it. Examples include employing practices that build soil health, improving water and air quality, and promoting energy efficiency. So how do farmers benefit? Silt farms can provide lower cost of land for beginning farmers, better security for farmers to stay on their land, access to land for growing local foods, and a rural lifestyle with small family farm operations that contribute to the local economy. We're working now specifically to place members of historically underserved communities as farmers on our farms. And we're doing so by partnering with organizations like Feed Iowa First in Cedar Rapids, LSI Global Greens in Des Moines, and We Arrows here in Waterloo. And we're connecting with individuals and families who are passionate about local food production. And in the process, we're making Iowa a great state to move to and to grow young families and grow good food. We're also protecting the future. Creating access to land for beginning farmers comes with other benefits, too. We can improve water and soil quality, localize food production, ensure the future of family farms, contribute to the health of rural economies through quality food production, and provide food security for growing communities. Remember the empty store shelves that we had during the pandemic? By having local food farms, we can alleviate some of that. Silt farms also work to protect and preserve natural areas for recreation and wildlife. Our impact: Since its founding in 2015, silt has protected sixteen farms across the state totaling twelve hundred acres. And we have several properties in process right now, and we are just getting started. Next. Looking forward, we continue in our mission to preserve farmland, help beginning farmers, and promote healthy, sustainable local food systems. With city planners and private developers, we seek to build small farms into the planning process. Independent family farms will provide a diverse, healthy landscape, increasing nearby home values, also while attracting new businesses along with high quality of life for their employees. Our Circle Our Cities campaign aims to surround ten Iowa cities with ten permanent table food farms. And you can see a map of those on the back of the handout that I shared with you. Locally, we have a partner that I previously mentioned here in Blackhawk County with We Arrows. In keeping with Silt's Circle Our Cities campaign, we were awarded a five-year, one-point-eight-million-dollar Iowa land access grant. And in the Waterloo area, we're working with Dequan Campbell and We Arrows. Our goals are to, through this grant, to serve underrepresented farmers in urban areas and to address two monumental challenges farmers face. That's navigating financial assistance programs and tackling the high cost of land. Silt finds the land, and We Arrows will help place farmers on it. Next. We also can fit in two Blackhawk County goals. The county has identified several goals, and Silt's mission addresses over half of them. Most importantly, I wanted to point out that we work together. We work together with local leaders and organizations with common goals and interests. And that includes working with the UNI Foods Team, Cedar Valley Regional Food and Farm Network, ISU Extension and Outreach Urban Ag, Blackhawk County Soil and Water Conservation District, and more. Next. But how do we fit into your comprehensive land use plan? Our Circle Our Cities campaign and Silt's goals and overall mission also support several of the goals of your plan, and we've outlined a few of them there. Next slide. Silt's Circle Our Cities campaign supports the city's comp plan goals and future growth areas, and we've met with both city and county staff and talked about this. Circle Our Cities does not threaten the city's planned expansion, and it's not conflict with the 2023 Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. Next slide. So how can Waterloo and city leaders partner with us? You know, leaders can invite us to participate in meetings and activities and other events where agricultural zoning is being discussed, especially when landowners and farmers might be present. You can support local food farmers. You can address food insecurity and encourage access to locally grown food. And you can collaborate with Silt on future local foods projects. Communication is key, and we're committed to maintaining an open dialogue with the city, and we look forward to working together with you. So in a nutshell, Silt is looking to preserve land for food, farming, and conservation, and we're working locally with We Arrows to cultivate those local food farmers to grow local food crops on the land that we protect and the foods for the community. So if you want more information about that, you can visit our website, www.silt.org. And you can ask me some questions. You can ask Les some questions. And we're just really excited to be here in the Waterloo area and to be working with you. Thank you for letting us come and speak today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, can we get a copy, can we get a copy of your presentation, your PowerPoint presentation?
Sure, I'll be happy to share with John, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Is your stat, oh, sorry, is your stat two hundred and seventy acres a day for the last five years? Is that just in Iowa?
It's from the US Census, so I think it's nationwide.
Okay, thank you. It seemed like a large amount is why I asked. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oral presentations also, if there's anyone else in the chambers or online that has a, wants to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward and state your name and address for me. Hearing none. First on new business, item A, an encroachment agreement, is a request by Danielle White for an encroachment agreement to allow for a fence, gazebo, and swing set on city-owned property in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District and A1 Agricultural District located south of 601 Cedar Bend Street. And I'm ready for the staff report.
This is Schneider with staff. The applicant is requesting an encroachment agreement to install a fence, gazebo, and playset on city-owned property south of 601 Cedar Bend Street within the flood control area. The request for an encroachment agreement would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood as the area is behind the flood control levee, and the encroachment can be removed if needed. A portion of the site is zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District and has been zoned as such since it was rezoned from U1 Unclassified District on December tenth, nineteen ninety. The other portion of the site in question is zoned A1 Agricultural District and has been zoned as such since it was rezoned from U1 Unclassified District on June fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight. The surrounding land uses in their zoning are as follows: To the north and east are single-family homes. Zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District. And to the west and south is green space in the Cedar River, zoned A1 Agricultural District. The future land use map designates this area as parks, open spaces, schools, hospitals, government facilities, public areas, and airport. The request is in conformance with the future land use map for this area as the area, as the area will be used for green space. The encroachment area is located within the primary growth area as identified in the city's comprehensive plan adopted August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant is requesting an encroachment agreement to install a fence, gazebo, and swing set on city-owned property. The fence will be four feet tall and will effectively add approximately fifty-eight hundred square feet to the applicant's yard area. The applicant has stated that the fence will be constructed to be partially removable using post supports that would go into the ground, allowing fence panels to be taken out with securing bolts at the base. The fence may be constructed with chain link or wood paneling. The gazebo would not exceed fifteen feet in diameter and not exceed fifteen feet in height. Examples of the playset and gazebo have been passed out to you prior to the meeting. The applicant is requesting to fence in the area as an extension of their yard and keep their young children safe. The swing set will be anchored to the ground, and the gazebo will be placed on runners to make it movable. The applicant is interested in purchasing the area. However, the area was purchased as part of the flood control levy system, and engineering has indicated that the area cannot be sold, but they are okay with an encroachment agreement as long as the improvements stay at least fifteen feet from the toe of the levy. Knutson noted that he would send an updated site plan of the allowed encroachment area to update the maps in the packet at the technical review committee meeting. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Danielle White for an encroachment agreement to allow for a fence, gazebo, and swing set on city-owned property in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District and A1 Agricultural District located south of 601 Cedar Bend Street be approved for the following reasons: The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. And the proposed structure will not interfere with the levy. Subject to the following conditions, a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement.
Thank you. Any initial questions for staff? I have one question. It appears, is the encroachment agreement just for the fence? It appears that the revised map that we just received, the swing set and the gazebo are both on their property?
This is Schrader with staff. Initially, the indication was that they would be on the city property as well, so we can let the applicant speak on that. But the site plan that they just submitted does appear to show it off, but we may want to still include it in the approval. That way, it would give them the option. The indication was that even if those were on city property, they're going to be designed as movable and so wouldn't be a concern if also included in the encroachment.
Thank you.
Question for staff. How routine are requests like these? How many requests do we get that are kind of like this?
This is Schrader with staff. Encroachment agreements aren't real uncommon of this particular type. I would say it's a, I don't recall that we've had one. More common encroachment agreements are like a sign within the right-of-way or a fence within the right-of-way. You know, this isn't actually the right-of-way. It's just city-owned property owned as part of the flood control levy system, but it's in an area that's, you know, as long as it's past the fifteen feet from the toe, engineering was okay with some minor encroachment that could still be removable if, you know, major levy work is needed. So this specific type of an encroachment, we don't, I don't recall seeing anything quite like that, but encroachments in general are semi-common.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I would assume that you're here with the applicant.
Yes, sir.
If you could please state your name and address.
My name's Matt White. I'm the husband of Danielle White, 601 Cedar Bend Street here in Waterloo.
Thank you. Do you have additional comments on the applicant?
I'm just here to kind of answer anything that you guys might have to ask or...
Any questions for Mr. White?
So this is Do Not. The clarification, I just wanted to know if you're actually approaching on the property and whether we actually need to have the inclusion that we just discussed.
I think we do. The fence will be no matter what, and then the placement of the swing set and gazebo would kind of be at their option, I would say.
Okay. Yep.
We've lived there for three years now, and we're right at the shoulder there, and people, you know, they like to pull in, park, go up the dike, walk to the lake, you know, take advantage of the trail system, and, you know, we're all on board with that, but we get some kind of hindering foot traffic to cut through our yard. It becomes kind of a safety issue at times. Other than that, you know, we got a young kid, and he kind of tends to wander around. We get animals, you know, people walk their dogs up there. They don't adhere to the leash law like they should. I do too have animals. We have animals also, which are always on leash or tether or some kind of underground fence or shock system. But I can't keep any of the other animals out of the yard.
Thank you.
And everything would be removable, you know, if there was a flood event and anybody needed in there, either we bulldoze it through or I can go out and remove it.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. White? If not, I would entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Shirk. I'll make a motion to approve the request by Danielle White for an encroachment agreement to allow for a fence, gazebo, and swing set on city-owned property in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District and A1 Agricultural District located south of 601 Cedar Bend Street.
Do Not seconds.
And sorry, that was subject to the following condition, that a fully signed and executed encroachment agreement as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Do Not seconds.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a request, special permit. Request by Grace Reformed Church for a special permit to allow for the use of a home for youth gatherings in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District located at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane, which is on pages thirty-three to forty of your packet.
What pages?
Pages thirty-three, pages thirty-three to forty of your packet.
This is Schneider with staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for youth gatherings in the existing home at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane. The applicant requested the special permit one year ago, and the Board of Adjustment voted to approve the special permit temporarily for one year to monitor parking at the site. Their request is now being presented again because the one year expired on October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Staff is not aware of any parking issues or other complaints about the use. Their request for youth gatherings in a home would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area as there have been no complaints about the property. The proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular and pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The parking has been evaluated over the past year, and there have been no concerns or issues. The parking lot at the church appears to provide enough parking for the home and the church. The site is served by Shady Lane, which is classified as a local street. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for youth gatherings in the home at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane adjacent to Grace Reformed Church. The youth meetings take place Wednesdays from approximately 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, September through May of each year. The church is using the home for youth gatherings because they've outgrown their space at the church. Therefore, there are group meetings at both the church and the home at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane. The applicant also indicated they use the garage in the rear of the lot for meetings sometimes, too. Parking requirements for a religious facility is but one parking space for each four persons of a maximum occupancy of the sanctuary/assembly area. The applicant utilizes the parking at Grace Reformed Church for these gatherings. The parking lot at the church appears to provide enough parking for the home and the church. The home uses the church bathrooms to meet ADA standards. The building department has evaluated the site and has no concerns if it is continued to be used in the same way as it is currently used. The original special permit was recommending, recommended for approval for one year by the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the Board of Adjustment voted to approve the request for one year with the special permit expiring on October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Grace Reformed Church for a special permit to allow for the use of a home for youth gatherings in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District located at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane be approved for the following reasons: The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood as there have been no complaints about the site, and the proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular and pedestrian traffic conditions in the area.
Thank you. Any initial questions from the commission members for staff?
This is Do Not. I didn't realize that this, that this item had come to the commission before. I had forgotten last year, and I had forgotten that parking was an issue and not the kids being kids was an issue, so, yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions for anyone? And it appears that we have the applicant here. If you would like to state your name and address.
Dave Van Netten, pastor of the Grace Reformed Church, thirteen-ten Shady Lane. I live right next to the youth house, so I'm simply here to answer any questions and hopefully help move this forward if we can.
Thank you. I think I have a question, maybe for staff more than anything. If we approve this tonight, this would kind of be in perpetuity. We wouldn't have to have come before this commission again.
This is Schrader with staff. Yours is just a recommendation, but yes, if you recommend and the Board of Adjustment approves it as such, then it will be permanent. We won't have to come back anymore.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
So would this be a motion to recommend rather than a motion to pass?
Yes, most items from the commission are a recommendation. Either, you know, special permits are an example of you're recommending to the Board of Adjustment. Most other stuff, you're making a recommendation to the city council.
So I can go ahead and make that motion if we're ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
Dave Boson. At the Board of Adjustment meeting in August of last year, and the staff reports, and this might be for the pastor, but it said that they would be required to install a sidewalk from the church to that residence if they had handicapped people, youth that were using the facility. And I'm just curious, if I didn't see a sidewalk in the report, did we install one? Or do we have any handicapped kids or youth that are being served by this facility?
I'll let the applicant answer that.
So we presently do not have a sidewalk. The fire marshal thought that we probably would not need one since we do not have any young people that require that. And as I mentioned last year, if there was a need, Grace Church would be all over that to help facilitate that, if we needed that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, this is Do Not, for indoor use, there's also, you can go to Home Depot or Walmart or various stores and get like removable, removable grab bars or grab bars that would be used indoors in the restroom so that it could be made accessible. And like I said, the grab bars would be removable because of the way you put them around the toilet or in the bathroom.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to move that the request by Grace Reformed Church for a special permit to allow the use of a home for youth gatherings in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District located at thirteen-twenty-two Shady Lane be approved for the reasons stated in the recommendation.
Second, Do Not.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Last on our agenda, C2 is a request by Laura Howard for a special permit for an urban, urban animal hobby farm to allow for ten chickens and ten ducks in the R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District located at seven-twenty-nine Avon Avenue. And we're ready for the staff report.
Let's start off with staff. The applicant's requesting a special permit for a hobby farm that would allow for up to ten ducks and ten chickens on a forty-four-hundred-and-forty-square-foot lot located at seven-twenty-nine Avon Avenue, which is the corner of Avon Avenue and Rio. Their request would, could have a negative impact on the area as the area is comprised of residential homes. The site in question and the residents surrounding the property are smaller lots that would be, that would be allowed by the zoning ordinance for any size hobby farm. And approval of the request could set a precedent. The site in question is zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District, zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses in their zoning are as follows: To the north, south, east, west, single-family homes zoned R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District, Riverfront Stadium and Sports Park are located about two blocks to the south. Riverfront Stadium and Sports Park are located about two blocks to the south. The future land use map designates this area as low density residential. The proposed hobby farm would not appear to be in accordance with the future land use map for the area. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for a hobby farm with, in the R2, 1 and 2 family residence district to raise up to 10 ducks and chickens. Their request could have a negative impact surrounding neighborhood. There are multiple homes in the area. The lot is 4,440 square feet. Therefore, variance to the size requirements for a fenced area of 10,000 square feet for the first two animals would be required. The site would require 12,500 square feet of fenced area to have three small animals, but could only have approximately, but would only have approximately 1,573 square feet of fenced area and currently has approximately 800 from what we can determine from GIS. When the applicant first inquired that what she, what she would have to do to have an urban animal hobby farm, she stated she had two ducks and did not want to get rid of them because she paid a large amount of money for them. Prior to submitting the application, she did not mention she was claiming them as emotional support animals. Under her application, it was also not claimed as designation. Code enforcement then informed staff that the applicant had more than two chickens. And another source later told staff that the applicant had maybe 14 chickens. Code enforcement noted that when the applicant appeared in court on citations, she had been issued by code enforcement. She then claimed that the ducks and chickens were emotional support animals. Upon inspection of the site, recent, in the past week, staff determined that there is approximately 42 animals. The U.S. Service Animals Organization states the only way to certify that a person needs an emotional support animal is to get a letter from a licensed physician or mental health professional. There are sites where you can self-register emotional support animals, but they have no ability to certify an animal. It should be noted that the emotional support animals do not fall in the Americans with Disabilities Act. Also, the information provided by code enforcement by the Director of Human Rights states emotional support animals, while they fall under fair housing, they must also follow any rules set by landlords and thus follow local laws and regulations. The applicant has presented a letter from a licensed therapist that says she needs an emotional support animal. Staff has spoken to this mental health clinician and she has not verified a number of support animals. And the letter from, said from the professionals, from the professionals said, stated a animal in single tents. When the animal, urban animal hobby farm section was added to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance in 2017, the intent was allow for small, to allow some abilities for residents to potentially have small-scale farm on a minor scale that would not be intrusive to the neighbors. The applicant now has 42 chickens and ducks on the site. Less than half of the smallest urban animal hobby farm would receive for two animals for square footage. The numbers requested would appear to be extremely out of character for a residential lot, especially one at 4,440 square feet. During tech review, both the engineering department and the fire department suggested, requested that Black Hawk County Health Department be contacted, which was done. Unfortunately, I did not get the response until today. And their response was once again, what I already mentioned about emotional support animals, how they're not covered by ADA. First, three things came to mind for them. The first thought was a manure management. How is the feces being managed by the birds? Is it being collected, composted, picked up? Feces from chickens can easily be, easily collected in a coop as it is a dry manure. If the birds are free range, how is the manure collected? Chickens and ducks do not produce urine, so the smell of urine is not an issue. Ducks are generally a messier fowl as they require ponds or pools. Do they have pools? How are these cleaned? How often? When fecal material becomes wet, especially with fowl, the manure becomes sticky and turns into a liquid substance. So there is cleaning, cleaning the feces on a regular basis. With an abundance of manure, there will be small, they'd be attracting flies and smell. Another thought was animal husbandry. There isn't a set standard for the number of birds per acre. Free-range birds typically require 50 chickens per acre. This house sits on .1 acres and the fenced area is substantially smaller than that. So 45 bird animals is a bit overcrowded for the free-range definition. Animal ethics plays a part into the confined animals. Typically confined chicken farm where eggs are collected, a bird will be, be caged with three or four other birds in a four-square-foot cage. Are the chickens on grass or a dirt enclosure? And there is no grass. It's all dirt. Third is egg production. Chicken and ducks lay eggs. What is happening to those eggs? Fourth is biosecurity, human and animal health. If animals are overcrowded, they become stressed. A stressed animal is more likely to come down with an illness. There are instances where chickens, if chickens are overcrowded, they become aggressive with their flock mates and turn to cannibalism. How are sick and dying chickens taken care of? Do they have a plan for dead animals? How are they protecting their flock from diseases, especially from wild birds? Do they have a plan on how to prevent manure from being tracked on footwear? How are they preventing other diseases from fowl-like mites? And so, and the other concern is, what is, are they attracting rodents and other pests by noise, odor and waste and feed? And that was from Black Hawk County Health. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Laura Howard for a special permit for urban animal hobby farm to allow for 10 chickens, 10 ducks in R2, 1 and 2 family residence district located at 729 Avon Avenue be denied for final reasons. Their request would not, would appear to have a negative impact on the area as the areas primarily compose of single-family lots. Their request could set a precedent for similar requests that do not meet the requirements of hobby farm as a 4,400 square foot feed is less than half of the amount of normal minimum of 10,000 square feet of fenced area and has 10 times the number of animals normally allowed. From the time of the application, the number of animals appear to have gone up from the 20 requested closer to 42. Shows the applicant may not comply with any set, number set for the location. Should, may not need, should have such animals. If the commission and the board agrees, staff would recommend a special permit for an urban animal hobby farm for one chicken and one duck as emotional support animals in the R2, 1 and 2 family residence district located at 429 Avon Avenue. That's a staff report.
Thank you. Any initial questions for staff?
Yes, this is do not. My initial question for staff is, if this were a regular farm, like if I was on my farm, could I have 45 animals? And who, who is the body that determines what people can have?
This is Schrader with staff. So within the City of Waterloo, on what is not considered a farm of 35 acres, then those type of farm animals fall under an urban animal hobby farm, of which who sets the restrictions on how many you can have? Was the Waterloo City Council upon recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission when the urban animal hobby farm regulations as an amendment to the zoning ordinance were passed back in 2017. On a normal farm setting, there, outside of city limits, agricultural and farm animals are considered exempt from zoning. So there is no restriction in the rural areas on how many you can have. The Health Department noted that their, you know, general recommendation of, with small type animals such as chickens having a minimum of one acre for up to 50 such small animals.
So I, I, I mean, I support the recommendation. I would have even gone and said, well, she had two ducks to start with when this, this whole situation started with. She, this person had two ducks and I would have given her the two ducks because she had those and then talked about the single chicken and stopped there. But she didn't, she doesn't need 45 animals or 42 animals or whatever she's got in her presentation. So, you know, I'm saying I support the ref, the recommendation.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Looks, appears the applicant is here. If you would like to state your name and address?
Laura Howard, 729 Avon Avenue.
Thank you. I guess my question for you is, it appears that you obviously had quite a few animals on your property prior to even coming up, coming up with this request.
I do. I have 10 chickens and 10 ducks myself. As I told John the other day on the phone, I have a friend that is on her honeymoon in the Maldives. I work in McCann, which is an hour and 45 minutes away. She asked me to take care of her animals. She has ducks and chickens too. So for the next two weeks, they're camping out at my house. And then they will go back to her house, which I explained that to John.
That's fine. I'm not here to point fingers.
Yeah, no, I get that.
I think the biggest thing that this commission needs to be focused on is the regulations that were set forth in approving the 2017 urban hobby, urban, urban animal farm. So I think that is our biggest thing for this commission is we have to follow by those guidelines. They were come up with for a reason, to set those square footage requirements and the number of animals that are required. Any other questions for the applicant? Any other comments that you would like to make?
No, they are registered as emotional support animals. I have two letters from my therapist. They helped me with my mental health. I have major depressive disorder. I have major anxiety disorder. I have PTSD and I have suicidal idealization. And they stop, you know, they helped me with that.
Thank you.
And I didn't tell John that I had two ducks. I said I had a couple of ducks that cost me $350 apiece and I really didn't want to get rid of them, but I had more ducks. I, I just, I'm sorry. I just don't appreciate being lied about.
Understood. Is anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak on this agenda item? Please come to the mic. State your name and address, please.
My name is Tarek. I live on Dawson Street, right around the corner. These animals, I've had run-ins with them ducks, walking my dogs. I don't know how many exact animals there are, but you hear them, you smell them. I don't want that in my neighborhood. When I see 10, 10, 10, I was like, no, that, it gotta be more than that. You know, but there's a fence there. I ain't never been on the property. I know I smell them. I hear them when I'm walking my dog. You know, the neighborhood we live in, I'm sure y'all wouldn't want them animals living in y'all neighborhood. Emotional support, I understand that, but what about everybody else in the neighborhood? You can't have everything for yourself. You know, you gotta think about your neighbors too. If you need that, move out the city limits. Or hobby farms right next to you, I'm, I'm fed up with this. I got neighbors to the back of me. I've been calling the city about them. They got a junkyard over there, built up fences, you know. And this is because it's the, maybe the, let me say the neglect excited town. I've called the city about trees that's dead and falling down. They don't do nothing about this. But this, I said this time I, I get the notice. I said, let me come in here and speak on this because I'm tired of coming around here. I shouldn't have to smell it. I shouldn't have to look at the ugly ducks outside your property. I wouldn't even know they was out there unless you hear them. But then you see them when I'm walking the dog and then the dog want to get down on it. If the dog, you're loose, then you're gonna have a problem, right? You know, it's everybody else. You gotta be considerate about everybody else. And that's all I got to say. I hope y'all do the right thing and don't let it have none of them animals since you lied in the first place about how many you had. I know how many you got. It's more than 10.
There's no need to argue right now, sir, but thank you for your comments.
That's my comment though. I know how many she has. It's more than 10. It's more than 20.
Sir, could you, sir, could you restate your name and address for the record?
My name is Tarek.
T-A-R-I-K?
Yes, sir.
And what's the address?
I live on Dawson Street.
What's the full address?
I live on Dawson Street.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Let me question. If not, I would entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Schaefer with, to make a motion to recommend denial of the request by Laura Howard for a special permit for the urban animal hobby farm to allow for 10 chickens and 10 ducks in the R2, 1 and 2 family residence district located at 729 Avon Avenue. Denied for the following reasons. The request appears to have a negative impact on the area as the area is primarily composed of single-family homes. The request could set a precedent for similar requests which do not meet the requirements for a hobby farm. And from the time of application, although the numbers have been disputed today, the animals appear to have gone up from 20 requested to closer to 42, which shows the applicant may not comply with any number set for the location. I am among the commission here that I would recommend a special permit for an urban animal hobby farm for one chicken and one duck, as stated the emotional support animals at 729 Avon Avenue. So I don't know if you want to combine the motion, but...
Yep, that's fine. Yep, thank you. In a second? Second, Shirk. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Can we have a little bit more discussion about verification? I agree with the motion as stated, but I would like to, I would like there to be verification that there would be, as stated, there would be one chicken and one duck instead of 42 or whatever the number is. I want there to be verification that the motion that was just presented be followed through upon.
That will have to be taken up by code enforcement.
Okay.
And after Board of Adjustment action. This is just a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take a second now without further clarification.
Shirk did, right?
Yep. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Last on our agenda is any open discussion if anyone has any comments on board?
This is Schrader with staff. I will just note, you know, we're currently down a couple of members, but that will be getting fixed soon. There are a couple of new members that are set to be appointed by the council here later this month. So hopefully next month, we'll have a couple of new members.
Sounds great. Thank you. And I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Shirk.
Second, you win.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.